When you play this video, I want you to keep in mind some things here that I'm going to point out. And you'll see, you can decide if you think I'm correct on this, or if you disagree with me, that's fine. But here you will see the path to get to this video on the Exeter Township website. I had a very difficult time finding this. And I encourage you to try to find it yourself on the Exeter Township website. Now, the problem with this idea of a community center is that it lacks broad public support. And I'll give you some data points in a few moments that support that. But if we're going to have a community center, this community center must be supported by the greater part of the community. Not only that, we need to decide if we're going to accept other grants that might cause us to have to open this up to everyone. Now, I don't want this to sound contrite, but if we're going to build a community center, it should be for our community. And the problem with that is we're close to other neighborhoods. We're going to have other kids, other people coming in and using our community center. And another thing that we need to be aware of is that this community center is going to compete with current businesses. Now, we had the township employee contend that that's not the case. But they showed us slides of a gym. And we have gyms in this community, and they're going to compete with the gyms. They talked about Olympic-sized swimming pool that's going to compete with our two outdoor swimming pools and our indoor swimming pool. Also, they talked about adult education. These classes are held at Alvernia, at Albright, and at the Reading Area Community College. And I don't know why we're duplicating this because we can't perform or do what they can do and do it as well as they do. So these are all good reasons to not listen to what our township supervisors are telling us. Now, for the support, this lack of support, this meeting, there were less than 50 people that called in. And I believe some of those people are not even members of the Exeter community. So we had less than 0.002% of community involvement. That's a fact. And then the survey that they referred to had way under, less than 1,000 respondents. And again, many of those respondents did not live in the community. But that is way less than 5% of the community, not broad support, not broad support at all. And then after two years that they've been throwing this around, they have no idea of the size of this community center and no idea of what the cost could be. And I don't know how these architects are going to come up with a presentable community center plan when they do not know the size or the costs that we're willing to spend. So we're also in the middle of COVID-19. They want to build a community center when the community is being told to distance themselves? This isn't going to work out for us. And just an add-on to this, they're going to have to hire more employees by the township to run this community center. More pension costs, more salaries, and you know your taxes are definitely going to go up. So you really want to consider, do you really want the township to build this community center? And the trade-off, from what I understand, is that community center are fire station. So they're doing community center with an Olympic-sized swimming pool, indoor walking tracks. I don't know. Finally, this will cost millions of dollars to build and maintain. Millions and millions of dollars, no doubt about it. So listen to the video that will be put on my YouTube page and also at exeterunited.com as soon as I process the video and put this piece in front of it. And make up your mind, give it some consideration, but recognize the consequences. Thanks for listening.
Well, I want to thank everybody on the line for joining us tonight. It's kind of a real fun opportunity we have. We really enjoy the opportunity to interact with the community. Different in the pandemic, but still, we welcome this interaction with you. What I'm going to do is have the four facilitators of the meeting this evening introduce themselves briefly. And then we'll kind of give you some ground rules for how this meeting is going to go so we can keep it orderly, and we'll move on. So Lori, why don't you get us started?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Lori Gitz, and I am the Assistant Township Manager of Exeter Township. And part of that role, I am the Department Head of Parks and Rec Department, and excited to talk to you all tonight about proposed community center.
Jeffrey?
Yes, my name is Jeff Bartlett. I'm the Township Manager for Exeter Township. Been working closely with Lori and the rest of the staff on this proposed project with KCBA Architects. And we're really excited to have everyone on. Looks like a real good participation number tonight.
Thank you. I'm Jay Klup. I'm the founding principal of KCBA Architects. We're a firm that specializes in municipal projects. All the things that we're going to talk about tonight, we have done some. But what the fun part is, we've never had the opportunity perhaps to do them all in one spot at one time. And ultimately, I'm excited that we have such a good turnout tonight.
I'm Ryan Orr, Registered Architect with KCBA Architects, part of the project design team here. I'm excited to see how this community center can take shape with your input. So with that, we'll jump to how tonight's going to work. So we are recording this meeting, and that's for us to be able to go back and dive deeper into all of your great comments that we're going to hear tonight. Everyone will be muted for the time being. That's just to avoid distractions, avoid other noise that might occur in the background. However, if you do wish to make a comment, ask a question, you can either raise your hand through the tools there at the bottom of Zoom, or you can type your comment or question into the chat during the presentation. Then after the presentation, we'll also be able to take questions and comments live. So feel free to indulge in the presentation for now. And then following that, we can certainly take questions and comments. So with that, we will move. Move to the agenda. So first, we're going to get a little background, project background information from both Jeff and Lori, who are going to take you through some of the steps that have happened already. Then Jay and myself are going to go through a program review of some of the spaces that we've heard from that project background information to see how this is shaping already. But we certainly want to hear from all of you how these spaces can be used. Are there any spaces that we're missing? What ideas do you have to incorporate into this community center? And then finally, that most important piece of tonight, input from all of you. So with that, we will turn it over to Jeff.
Okay. A number of years ago, the community expressed an interest in a public community center. As part of that interest, a survey was developed that was, I believe, in 2019 to solicit an input from the residents. It was actually a very good survey number considering the amount of people in the township. The township is studying this project's financial and operational viability. So this evening, anything that we can provide to the architects as far as what the public would like to see in this facility will help us to determine, can we put this thing together? And what it might potentially cost to build it and to operate it. And we really want to continue to have an open dialogue with the residents. Anytime the residents are encouraged to put public comments in, they can email them directly to me or to Lori at any time on any subject for that matter. But specifically about this, after you've gone through this evening, something new may pop in your head, and please make sure you get that information to us. We're combining all of that together in the final report. And I'll pass the talk to Lori.
Thanks, Jeff. So as Jeff mentioned, and some of you on this call may remember that back in 2019, we did do a survey. We conducted it through Survey Monkey, and we did have a pretty good response rate. We had 982 individuals respond to the survey. And we had a wide variety of representation across all age groups, with the majority of respondents being between the ages of 35 and 54, and about 96% indicated that they are township residents. So we had a pretty good response there. So with the, why did we do the survey? So really, we were looking to answer two fundamental questions. Number one being, is there an interest in the community center? So we wanted to know, does the township want this? And as the second part of the survey, the second question we wanted to ask was, okay, if the first answer is yes, well, what do people want to see in a community center? So what will it look like? So to the first question of, does the township want this? We felt we got an overwhelming yes to that question. Over 75% of respondents to the survey indicated that having a community center as part of the proposed municipal complex is a must-have or fairly important. And in addition to that, over 66% of those who responded to the survey said that they were very likely or likely to utilize a community center. So both pretty strong responses on the first question. So the second part, so we got the interest. People would like to see a community center. What does that look like? What does the township think that a community center is? What do our residents want? So this is just a list. It's not an all-inclusive list of the suggestions that we got, but these were the most highly mentioned. So one of those facets was adult and senior health and fitness programs, youth and adult social activities, youth sports programs, adult learning sessions, meeting and seminars, after-school programs, and satellite library programs. So we got a pretty wide range of suggestions on what the residents would like to see in a community center. And that's what brought us here today. So I'm going to turn it over to Jay to take on the next part of the presentation.
Well, thank you, Lori. So basically, I want to, again, refocus us. There's a lot of pieces that are being studied as the master plan to what the township wants to do with its facilities in the next 50 years. This piece tonight we're focusing on is exclusively on the community center portion, just so we get that squared away. We have been talking to the township and other end-users, the firemen, the police, and like others, to begin to develop some ideas, a general idea of what the other functions might be. But this one's kind of the most fun for me because it's the most flexible, the most open-ended, the most kind of really a genuine community. It's all a community asset. Municipal properties are municipally owned and municipally operated for the community's benefit. But especially when you get around a community center, there's really a lot of fun that can happen. It should, to be done ideally correctly, accommodate all age groups and all needs as much as possible. So that is where we're going to go tonight. What we're going to do, each of the items that came up in the survey kind of triggered some thoughts. So we have some, this is not a design. This is kind of like to tweak your thought process. Examples of different things we've done in different areas that you can just kind of get that thought, those juices going. And then we're going to go to the end and turn it over and have a discussion. So let's start with a couple of those right now. One of the components, obviously, is a place to hang out, right? For lots of different things, gathering spaces, something that would be kind of fun to be in. And again, flexibility is going to be the theme for tonight. The more we can double-use spaces, the more it's more economically viable to do this and economically viable to operate it. And yet, some spaces don't overlap as well as others. So you see an opportunity in a lounging area. Maybe we supplement it with a kitchenette, maybe supplement it with some vending, so it can be a genuine space for people to gather. That's one of the common elements. Another one, all the teaching and meeting, it comes across for all ages. Again, we talked about all the way to after-school, to senior classes, maybe some things, teaching computer skills, just a lot of things that can happen. And that would be ideally in a classroom setting. So we would anticipate the desire to put in some classroom-type spaces. We'd like to make them flexible in size so we can accomplish some different activities in the same space. This particular photo happens to show a folding partition that can be pulled across. And it's sound rated so that that space can be two classrooms wide or one classroom wide. So just some thoughts. All these, by the way, are ideas and don't have to happen or could happen. And what would be interesting to hear the dialogue? Obviously, when people think of a community center, one of the often things is those competition courts. I don't think any community I've ever worked in has enough of those. So it was our desire to hopefully provide at least one gym and some cross courts so we can have multiple uses of that by multiple groups in the township. We want to configure it for lots of kinds of sports because there's many, many that can be done. And because we want it to be flexible as possible for almost anything else, you'll see in these slides, with the pandemic, this isn't going to surprise anybody, but it was going to be part of our thrust anyway. Lots of audiovisual and technology backbone in these spaces so that we can do the kind of things we're doing tonight and all kinds of presenting when we get back together. So things behind the walls to kind of make the thing work with everybody's technology. What the technology we know now and what's going to come down the pike in the future. We want to give it a backbone.
And just one thing to add on here, Jay, too, is, you know, this is a large space that could be utilized for many different events, many different community events, not only, you know, as a multi-station gym, but any large gathering when we're able to all be back together.
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, the more flexibility we can go, the more, the ideal of a community center would be to get it chock-a-block full of activity from the early morning till the late evening. Then we've succeeded. Everybody has a slot, everybody gets a use out of it, nobody's excluded. One of the things that came up in the survey was the ability to have an elevated track. Now, when we do one of these, we want to be careful that it doesn't restrict any other use in the building and it doesn't impinge upon the space below. I think many of you may have been in spaces where the curving gym track is, if it's too short, it's like running on a fan. If it cuts a corner of the courts below, it's very unreasonable. So this would have been a great thing to have in February, I'm guessing, when we got all that snow. It would have been nice to have one of these. And this would get into things like cardio training, walking, actually seniors, walking programs. You don't have to run on a track. There's lots of different ways to use a space like this one. Another feature that is mentioned, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah.
Fitness room. And again, we could have cardio equipment, we could have just free spaces with mats. We can, again, load it up with technology. I guess you know those videos that you see people doing exercise videos and all that good stuff. There's a wide range of how much outfit, outfittedness would need to be in this space. But we want to make space for these kind of activities. That obviously is a different space than a classroom space. Those don't overlap. Spin rooms, very popular. And again, they're pretty flexible spaces. You can do spin rooms and do other things in the spin rooms. A lot of our facilities do yoga in a spin room when you're not using it as a spin room. But here you see, some of the ideas that were put forth and came forth were a place where you could maybe get 15 to 20 stationary bikes. And with the, ultimately, again, loading it up with technology. Next one. We've been told that if we do this, we would like to have it fully outfitted with showers and lockers. So it would be a place that would have that option in it. The size of those showers and lockers would probably come out based on the usage that we would have, how many people would actually change there and shower there, and how many people would go home. You know, how many people would go away. We want to remember the opportunity. I like, your township, Exeter Township, has lots of green, open areas. And I think basically, I'm pleased that one of the focuses, getting a town green, a town center. Maybe as you see here, you see some terracing there where the terrace on top is flexible for various events, tree lighting and the like, summer festivals. Maybe out in front, you see the asphalt, food trucks, that kind of stuff. Just a nice, flexible place outdoors to use the outdoor spot as much as we can. All right, the next one. All right, so that was to get your thought process going. I see we did. We're getting comments popping up all over the place, and that's fine with me. Basically, this is, actually, Mark, we're not throwing everything on a wall to see what sticks. We're throwing everything out there to tweak everybody's imagination. You as a group can tell us what maybe isn't something that's necessarily desirable. That's fine with me. A couple of things we have to do before, because we have so many people, really have a big crowd. So we're going to hear from everybody, that I promise you. It's going to take some time, so please wait. We will get to you. We promised to do that. Ryan's kind of screening everything and making sure we can do that. We're going to take everybody as we're able, and we ask that you be mindful of other people's time. So, and we did have some call-in comments prior to this. We can either have the people who made those comments make them to this group, or we can read them to the group and have that entered into the dialogue as well. The other clarification, and this is really important because everybody finds things that are very, very, very important to each of you. Some of these things are not going to be able to happen. It may be because of budget, it may be because of operational, it may be because of proximity. You can't fit all this stuff in the same spot. So again, everybody understands here, I see it popping up. We are doing police stations, we are doing firehouses. That piece of the component is covered. Tonight, we're talking about the community center. The community center is on the table. The other ones, if we need another meeting for those, great. But right now, I want to focus tonight on the community center. And I think with that, Ryan will get us started. And again, we'd ask you to be respectful of the time, and we'll listen as long as it takes to all the comments we got, and we'll make sure. If we don't get them recorded tonight, they are being recorded, and we'll get them transcribed so we understand what we heard. So go for it, Ryan.
Yeah, sure. If you would like to make a comment, like I said, you can either raise your hand digitally through Zoom, put in the chat that you would like to voice a comment, or if your video is on, feel free to give me the high song. There are lots of comments going in the chat, but if anyone would like to...
That's filling up, but nobody wants to talk.
Yeah, and if anyone in the chat would like to elaborate on something they put in the chat, let us know.
Right, I see Susan's, Susan, you had given us an email. Would you like to just expound on it now, or would you like me to read it?
And Brenda Haas, to let you know, yes, I have to unmute you. So just let me know that you would like to speak, and I will ask you to unmute. So we're going to go to Brenda Haas.
Okay. Yeah, hi, good evening. I just was thinking, is there an option potentially? I'm just putting this out there for maybe a senior center within this complex. You know, as our township gets older, folks, maybe it'd be something nice for them to have an area where they can get together and do activities or, you know, meals or things along those lines.
That was one of our primary goals. I think we'd be really remiss if we didn't get a big senior participation. I think demographically, Pennsylvania is headed that way in the next 20, 30 years. And we're looking at a 50-year master plan here, so absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I got a note from Hunter, so I will... I'm not seeing Hunter's name here. Here we go. Asked to unmute.
Can you hear me, Ryan?
Yes, you are good to go.
Yeah, first of all, just thank you guys for being here this evening and preparing this presentation for us. I guess just for myself, and I filled out the survey last year, and I think I put interested as my response to the initial question about a community center. I think, and you guys probably already know this, the real big question is finances. The township has been blessed in a big way with the financial windfall from the sale of the wastewater treatment plant. I'm not sure if people want to call it a windfall, but so it is. I guess I'm just trying to, you know, keep my mind open about what that cost might be because a community center that costs $1 million with those proceeds versus one that costs $20 million is a big difference. You know, outside of that, too, I think some of the people in the chat have made some interesting comments as well. I'm not sure that we'd want to incentivize the township to compete directly against some of the businesses that are in the community. And I think we even have some unique businesses like Hillcrest Racquet Club, which is a tennis business on the top of the hill in Exeter Commons. And they also have an indoor field, I believe, as well. You know, I think some of the other spaces that we're talking about here are already existing in the community, whether it be with the school district or whether it be outside of that. Maybe some of those spaces can be leveraged better with some collaboration. You know, I guess I'm interested generally. I think especially after COVID, there's going to be a huge desire for people to get together and to congregate in similar places. I guess my real question is, what makes the community center here unique? And what does it offer that will be unique? And I think in my mind, that would make the most sense to me, providing something that's unique for the community that you can't get going to the city, that you can't get going to Wyomissing or elsewhere, and kind of providing that service while also balancing the desire to respect and to elevate the businesses that are in the community. So those are just a few of my thoughts. And I, Ryan, I sent you an email yesterday with an additional question. I don't know if you got that or not.
We did receive it, but feel free, if you want to elaborate here, you can.
Yeah, the other question I just had generally is, could some of this be done piecemeal? What are the trade-offs associated with saying, you know, we're not sure what the full commitment for an entire community center with a gym and maybe with a pool and all that different stuff is? So let's try and do it one piece at a time and see what the community feedback is from their presence at a community center would be. You know, I think that's kind of speculative again, because we don't want to spend money that doesn't have a good outcome, obviously. But that's just a curiosity that I had, if you guys can address those trade-offs. Thank you.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. I do have the email here that you sent. You are correct. We're going to do a master plan and make sure, because we're setting up for 50 years. So if the community center isn't something that's necessarily embraced right now, we don't want to leave no room to put it there. What we're envisioning right now, in order, because, you know, these buildings are expensive to create. It's popped up in the chat in several areas. One way to help that is to multi-use things. If we can pair functions together and use public toilets, public lobbies, some of the public functions, maybe the mechanical systems, it somewhat brings down the cost. So if you leave the community center totally out in day one, you may give up some of that, which is fine. I mean, it'll be a group decision and ultimately be a decision by the supervisors. So that makes kind of the sense. The trade-off you make is, it does go up about 5% a year. And that's actually can be tracked on Engineering News Record we subscribe to as a national, it's McGraw-Hill. Since 1900, they track construction costs. It was interesting to me, I follow these because my livelihood depends on it. Even through the Great Depression and the recession that we had in about 2008, the public construction costs tracked by McGraw-Hill, not by me, averaged 5% a year. So you have to make an informed decision. If you decide you can't afford it now, which could happen, or you don't want it now, I think at the very least, we want to leave a spot for it. But if you decide that's as a group or as a township, it is a township community center, then we can expect someday for it to go up in cost just on inflation, 5%. The other thing that kind of happens, it's way easier to build it all at once because you get the economy scale, the contractors there, you know, everything's open. Working around people gets to be a lot more expensive and tough. around people gets to be a lot more expensive and tough. But on the other hand, you know, I don't want everybody to think I'm pushing something you don't want or can't afford. The dollar thing will be brought to the supervisors after we get the program ironed out, so it's a phasing and a staging thing, and it has an operational piece, too, depending on what's in it. So, at the end of the day, I think ultimately, if you want it, it's more ideal to build it now. If you build it now, you will save money, but you can shrink it now, or shrink it and leave space to grow it. There's a lot of options out there, that's why this is kind of fun. At this point, everything's on the table.
All right, there was Susan, Susan had her hand up, but it went down. So, Susan, if you'd like to still make a comment, Susan Swably, I'm going to ask you to unmute, if you, there you go.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment in regard to the, having space both for storage and for distribution for the Exeter area food pantry that serves all of our community's members that are food insecure, and that we really would be able to utilize that space at that location very well. Thanks.
I think that's very doable. We certainly, in the flexible spaces, have lots of places to dispense, we'd have to design in just places to store, and we'd have to have a discussion about what, how big that might need to be, but usually, storage spaces are not particularly expensive to construct relative to some of the other spaces in the community center, so that's fine as well.
Okay, Ken has had his hand up, so I'll ask him to unmute. Ken, are you there? I see you've unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, very good. I so enjoy these meetings, concepts are wonderful. Has there any, has there been any consideration, I know they're very, very expensive, but I get asked the expensive questions and different questions, has there been any consideration to an auditorium as a part of this facility? And, and on the cheaper side, would it be possible to add some indoor bocce courts, so that people could play bocce year-round?
And I can tackle both of those. We probably are going to have a problem with the pool, I understand the community needs one, it's very, very expensive to build and operate, if there's a ground swell, we can bring that back on the table, but initially, it appears that could be a tough, tough one to operate. Bocce courts are pretty easy to construct, they're probably not such a big deal. The pool brings with it all kinds of health regulations, lifeguard staffing, just a multimillion-dollar initial construction, the ventilation requirements to keep mold and stuff going. It would be a nice feature, most of the community centers we do in other townships do not have a pool, but I understand your community is lacking one, and I understand your concern. We'll put it down here, in my initial reaction, you know, whatever we got, we'll put it down, we're looking, but that's, that's the initial reason it wasn't shown in any of those examples.
Thanks very much.
Sure. Jay, there were a couple other questions, the type of security required for this type of facility.
Right, I think that's a good thing. If we're able to pair it with the township, and you shared lobbies, shared toilets, we can get a leg up on the security needs. It's obviously going to have to be staffed, in addition to the regular township, it's got to be staffed by probably Parks and Rec personnel and community volunteers, you're not going to be able to just show up unannounced and just waltz into the place, that's what's, that's where the world's at in 2021. So, but one of the thoughts that we had, if we're able to make this work, common lobbies, common public toilets, common vestibules, give us the ability to maybe do some kind of buzz-ins or non-buzz-ins, you have options that give you some choices. As far as hardware for security, all of... A bigger pardon? Okay, all the facilities we design always have cameras and multiple stations for staffs to view them, but I think logistically, you want to design it so it's kind of self-secure. The best way to make a building secure is a lot of eyes on it, because most people are honest. So, the more people that are watching the lobby, the more people that are watching the parking lot, the more people that are near it, generally, the safer it's going to be.
All right, I'm not seeing any other, any other hands right now, so feel free, put in the comments, oh, all right. David Hughes, we will ask you to unmute.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. You know, I downloaded this stuff off of Exeter website, and apparently, they claim that this town center and the community center are part of the economic development, and I made a comment earlier, economic development is not really what this is. Economic development is retail stores, manufacturing, and residential. These economic type of developments bring in property taxes, income taxes, and sales tax. We're going to build this, and we're talking, I haven't heard a number on what this is going to cost, okay? In fact, I haven't heard a number on what the whole project is going to cost. My estimate is 30 to 40 million dollars, okay? And if we do that, we're going to build this infrastructure, and we've never taken care of our other buildings, and once the money is gone, taxes are going to increase incredibly, I mean, huge. Our budget right now is being subsidized by 1.7 million dollars of the sewer fund proceeds, and they project they'll be continuing to subsidize it. So, we're already subsidizing our taxes, and I'm telling you, this, this is like, this is like a Christmas thing where the kid wants everything, it's not going to work. I have a vision of how we can save 55 million dollars, at least, of our money. It can work for us in the future, all we need to do is turn over the present facility to the police and highway, and then we can lease or buy the imperium building next to the promenade for our administration and our engineering.
David, I'm going to interrupt you there right now, just, we're here to talk about the, we're here to talk about the community center.
Going through with this community center is an extravagant expense. Most of these items that you talk about, like the audiovisual, the fitness room, the fitness room competes with our local gyms, multiple classrooms, all of these things exist in other venues. You know, this is, this is the wish of spending a lot of money that we really shouldn't be spending at this time. COVID-19, we don't know when this is going to end, and the variants are going to be coming out. In addition to that, a lot of the new generations, they're not interested in this stuff, they're just not interested in it. So, I think, also, it was mentioned that in the survey, that they had 75% of respondents wanted to do this. Well, the problem with that survey was that it was not inclusive of the whole community, I mean, there was, it wasn't a large survey, it was, I think it was less than 5% of the population. So, we're going like, you know, bent out of heck here to build this thing, or to convince us to build it, and I want everybody to remember this, if you, if these board of supervisors go ahead and build this thing and the other facilities, it's going to be like, you know, a tax bomb going off in a few years. We took it in the shirts with selling the sewer plant, this is another thing, the promenade, it's going to be turning into a debacle for us.
All right, thank you.
This is just an example.
David, thank you for your comments, anything else specific to the community center tonight?
Yeah, as a, as a someone who's opposed to the community center, I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm running for township supervisor, and if I'm elected, I'm going to oppose this building, for the reasons that I stated, unless someone can thoroughly convince me, we're not going to run into tax problems in the future. Thank you.
David Hamburger had a question, Jay, are there, are there other existing community centers in Pennsylvania that would serve as an example?
Yes, there are. One of them actually is in Montgomery Township, that is not too far from our office. There is one in Plymouth Meeting, there is one in, I think it's Haverford Township, I know of those three at least, Laura, you had seen a couple.
Yeah, we did, so I have a couple of things I can kind of respond to at this point, but yeah, we did, the staff, now, this was all pre-COVID, so it's a while ago, at this point, everything feels like it was, but the staff did tour several community centers in the area, and, yes, there are a lot of models that, that we can base our ideas off of, and again, this is just a brainstorming session, we're looking to see what people might like, what was included in the presentation or the results of the survey, and things that people have told us that they'd like in a community center. As far as a gym, I know I saw Janet Hurlbrink had mentioned about, she put a comment in about competing, not competing with local gyms, we are absolutely not intending to compete with any local gyms, we are not in the business of running a gym or anything of that sort, so that is not our intent, and in fact, and I think this may go to a couple of questions that I saw pop up on here, and again, we're in the brainstorming phase here, but we have had several meetings with local business owners and local community members to partner with on a potential future community, community center. So, so that's kind of the direction that we are looking, we are not looking to build a big gym, we're not trying to be Gold's Gym. So, just to, just to comment on that, but yes, many other townships do have community centers, and they have great models, and that's where we based some of these ideas off of, and I know Hunter, actually, in one of Hunter's comments was, Wyomissing has these things, why do we want to create something, what's going to make this unique, why do we want something that Wyomissing already has, or you can travel to, maybe down the road to Montgomery County, like, why do you want to do that? I think the idea is here, and I hear it personally a lot from residents, that, well, we don't have anything in Exeter. So, the idea here is, we would really like to create a space for our community to gather, that's the intent behind the project, the proposed project, nothing is set in stone at this point, and, yeah, we'd, we'd like to create some opportunities for our residents to be able to recreate, attend programs, learning opportunities, things like that, right here in our township, including things that we can offer to the kids and to our senior population. So, that was a long answer to your question, Jay, but I just wanted to throw all of that in there.
That's fine.
All right, are there other, other people with comments? Please raise your hands, we're in the chat, make yourself aware. There were a few other questions that were just answered, but I also saw other suggestions in the chat of cooking classes, some other, other ideas of spaces that could be in there, so any of those ideas as well, we'd love to hear your thoughts and ideas. Okay, well, we're coming to about 45 minutes, so, are there any other thoughts, comments? Please make yourself known now. Hunter, okay, since I'm not seeing anyone else, we did want to give everyone a chance to speak, speak first, however, if someone else is not, oh, William, okay, Bill, we're going to, Hunter, we'll circle back around to you. Are you able to unmute yourself? There you go.
Yeah, I just have a question. Two years ago, I was on a committee for the 20 to 30-year plan for Parks and Recreation to make Exeter green, and to provide areas of parks and recreation, like I say, 20-30 year plan was very well done by the company that did it, and I'm just wondering, at this point, what will be the priority for the township? Will that 20 to 30-year park plan, recreation park plan be a priority, or will the community center, or are you going to have a mix?
Sure, well, I'll take the first part of that for, I can't speak to the plan for the entire township, but I know that whatever would happen with this site would certainly include open spaces, as Jay alluded to on that last slide there, the public plaza would certainly have open spaces, green spaces for gathering and different sorts of that, as well as, you know, that promenade site right now is a parking lot, there's, there's a lot of asphalt, and a lot of building coverage there, so certainly, any project that would occur on that site would certainly introduce more green, more trees to at least that, that specific site. Continue, I've got, or Laura, go ahead.
And Bill, I would, I would add to that, that, yes, that comprehensive plan serves as a guide for everything that we do, and that, in that guide, it also suggests programming and things like that, and that's where we, that's how we know that we are lacking in programs for seniors, and that's part of how, what guides where we're focusing, when we're looking at what programming we're developing, and it will serve as a guide, should we move forward with the community center. But I would not say that a community center would take precedent over parks, if that's what you're asking, and, and green open space is a huge priority for us in the township, so that would definitely be something that's included.
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, the way the plan was put together, and like I say, I thought it was put together very well, there was a lot of talk about putting the various things down, the child-run sports complex, including an auditorium, type outdoor auditorium, few other things down there, and I'm just wondering, again, will that be, you know, where, where is the priorities going to be? I mean, I knew there was a pretty good amount of money spent on developing that plan, and like I say, it was a very good plan, I have the 20 to 30-year plan, you know, that was printed out, and there are a lot of great ideas and stuff.
Yeah, so I think you're talking, you're talking about the trout-run master plan, then?
Well, no, it included, included the whole Exeter community, there were trails and everything all over, but yeah, I'm talking about some of the things that were planned for child run, but it's part of that whole plan.
Yes.
I don't know how many of the, how much of the community is aware of that, that 20 to 30-year plan, and what was planned with that, and again, you know, the question was raised about money and taxes and everything like that, you know, what's going to be the, is it going to be a combined effort between the two plans, between the community center and what's done up there, can the 20, 30-year recreation plan, or is something else going to be a priority, is community center going to be the priority?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of these things are mutually exclusive for our park projects, we seek a lot of grant funding, so that's how we, that's how we accomplish those, those projects, so that is absolutely still a priority, but to answer your question, the comprehensive plan and our Parks Master Plan will help to guide the process for the community center, so in my opinion, the community center fits in to our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you for your comments. There was, I did see someone in the chat mention that there are questions in the chat that aren't being answered, we're, we can't necessarily get to every single question in the chat, so if you like your question answered now, I would suggest that you unmute and ask your question, otherwise, we will go back through the chat after, after this and try to answer as many questions as possible. as possible. All right, seeing no others, we'll go back to Hunter for the time being.
Yeah, thank you again. And I'll try to be quick because I don't want to take others' time. I'm just curious if you guys could speak to any of the market research around the desire for services like this. I think Mr. Hughes had mentioned earlier that there won't be, especially with millennials and Gen Xers. That's honestly not my gut instinct, but I'm sure that you guys are much more familiar with that market research than I am. The other curiosity that I just had is if there are any novel uses or spaces that some of these other programs have had that maybe you didn't identify in the initial presentation, if you could just elaborate on that. Thank you.
Well, one that comes up a lot in yours is the food pantry. That's a new one for me, and we're gonna take a look at that. I think community centers, by and large, the chief component that all of them have is meeting spaces of all sizes so that all groups can use them. How you fit them out is a second level. Do you get them very specific? Or it's just rooms like, some of my rooms, you know, stuff gets pushed aside, yoga mats come in, people come and go, later on they have a birthday party there. All good. Senior centers, I think, really would be a good thing. I really believe that's an important need. And I think there's nothing in a community center that would preclude that. It's mostly a scheduling issue. And I think that's fine. And a lot of our community centers, you find the time of day matters. The youth are in school, once the pandemic straightens itself out, the youth are in school during the day, and that's probably a good opportunity for senior center activities. In the evening or afternoon, the younger kids are out of school, and that might be a really big valuable after-school program. And then in the later evening, you might get some of the older kids that parts of these rec leagues and that kind of stuff. So those are the kind of synergies that we generally see in a good community center, one that has flexibility and get the most, again, lots of points have been made, they're expensive to build. You know, public buildings, by the nature of the codes and by the nature of their durability and by the nature of the constituency, they're very expensive to build. So the idea here is to multi-use as much as possible and don't build a space if the community is not interested in using it or a significant number of people aren't able to use it. And so that's kind of where it goes. Relative to the market research part, that's gonna come from the township side. They have to put together a business plan of how, you know, volunteers, youth groups, how this thing would actually be operated is not on the design piece at this point. So that's an extra township. That's their piece of the puzzle. And it's important.
Jay, there's a question just now about inclusion of an auditorium for cultural programs.
Well, it depends on how we do some of these meeting spaces. The concern with an auditorium is it's not real flexible. If we go auditorium-like, I'd like to be thinking about Black Box, something where the seating, you can actually have auditorium seats with arms that fold up, that give you the flexibility to do more with that space than just an auditorium. My concern is auditoriums are very, very expensive. And if you can only use it for an auditorium, you're not gonna be able to do some of the other programs. On the other hand, it's pretty valuable to have something like that. And the way to get that is a space that is more flexible. And you can do that with, we call it Black Box, but it's flexible seating, it's ways to rearrange the same space. And you would probably have some, and it can get pricey, some theatrical lighting could be included that could be used for different issues. A real dedicated auditorium is going to be very restrictive in how many people use it throughout the whole day long. So I'd be pushing for something a little more flexible that accomplishes the same goal, having assemblies, being able to do some theater. You should be able to do that in a more flexible space than an auditorium.
All right, since we did circle back to Hunter, we'll circle back around to Ken.
I'm just gonna take a second to, just want to remind everyone to please keep it civil and professional in the chat box here. We're looking to have a good, productive conversation. And I'm seeing some comments here that, you know, prefer not to.
Ken, go ahead and unmute.
All right, thanks for inviting me back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Quick question, does Berks County have a planning commission?
Yes.
And do they offer planning assistance to townships and municipalities in the county?
Their role is really not geared towards planning for a project like this. Typically, planning commissions give input back to a developer and back to the township on more projects that are being proposed, land development plans. They don't typically get involved in a project like this with a township to help, to actually help plan.
Okay, interesting. You can tell I tip my hand, I'm obviously do most of my work in Montgomery County. Thanks very much for your time, guys. Great meeting. I really enjoyed, I love to see concepts and I love to see the places that you mentioned because, you know, people in Eastern Arton Township asked, how come we can't have a community center? We just sold a sewer transfer pipe and all the rest of that for sixteen million dollars. Let's have a community center like Plymouth. And I told them, I says, you know, to build the Plymouth Community Center today is probably in the sixty-five to eighty million dollar range. And they all looked at me and said, well, what do you know? I said, so you guys are right on. I really enjoyed the meeting. I congratulate you all on your professionalism and a great discussion this evening. I enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, and just so we can be totally transparent, we are not hiding a budget from everybody. We're developing a budget as we have the different meetings with the different people, the different pieces, fire, police, highway, EMS, all those pieces. So the budget will come, and we don't work in back rooms and make big secret deals. It's just, it's the process is get an understanding of what it is in the ideal. And obviously, when you get around to money, then you make some hard choices. And I think Hunter brought that up, some other people brought that up. What can you afford or not afford? And ultimately, that's a big decision. But the way to get to it is to have an open discussion, be reasonable about the thoughts, and then make a list and maybe prioritize that list and see what that takes you to in a budgeting phase. So there will be budget discussions. It is part of our study. It is something we owe the township. We will be having them, we will be having meetings about them. I'm hopeful they won't be Zoom anymore. It'd be more fun to be out in the world with people again, but if they're Zoom, they're
Now, would not be a good time to go back through the, I've been looking through the chat.
Sure, yes. Yeah, if you want to bring it up.
Black Box is covered with everything but, so if you're just giving me some, I'll bring it up.
I'm just gonna, I'm looking for the ones that we haven't touched on already. Sandra Lloyd said, would like to see more community-focused use meeting rooms, after-school programs, room for community outreach, like the Exeter area food pantry. I think we, you know, we touched on that, so those are good.
Those are easy ones to provide. They're not, those are not the expensive spaces to build, and they're relatively easy to maintain. So that's all, that's all good stuff. And it's very flexible, it serves a lot of people in a small space. Good stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Senior center, we covered that. Hopefully, I don't miss anybody here. I think we talked about some of these things. But adult continuing education, yes, absolutely. That's one of the things that was identified in the survey, and that's something that we've discussed as being included potentially in programming for meeting spaces, those flex meeting spaces that we talked about in the presentation. Sorry, there's a lot in here, just trying to see which ones we didn't talk about. Okay, I'm back to Dave's. Sandra Lloyd said, my thirty-one-year-old son is very enthusiastic about community centers. Good, me too. Budgets, Jay just covered that.
Yeah, in addition to budgets, future time plan going forward.
Okay, thank you. My screen keeps jumping back.
I can address that. We need to continue to get the input. We need to then do some test fits to see what can and cannot fit on the promenade site. And we then need to develop budgets that go with that. And all those things will be forthcoming. Kind of an open-ended timeframe because we're, it's like a cook marinating something. We don't want to skip a step. We will get to all of it. Nothing's gonna happen, no decisions are gonna be made that aren't made publicly, and that won't be there. The next steps would be taking the stuff that we know about, giving it a mass, a square four inch size, then seeing how it would fit on the promenade site. You know, what would go where, what would be a good neighbor, what would be a poor neighbor to one another? There are very diverse pieces to this outside the community center. The community center marries well with the administration. It does it very well with the police particularly, because the police are flying and out, and they always have, often have some dealings with some people, and that's so nice. What actually groups well are emergency services. EMS, fire, and police make pretty good neighbors, and we could probably find a spot to kind of keep them on the same site, but a little bit separate. And then finally, the guys that have been keeping on the roads all of February, the highway department, they have big bulky things, they have things that are kind of messy. It's your back of house kind of stuff. Promenade's on a big hillside, you really see it. So we want to find a home for them. So our initial thoughts are groupings on that site that complement one another to use the common facilities per group, lobbies, toilets, utilities to the maximum advantage. If that finds some traction, then what would it be in a budget cost? And then when the budget costs come up, then comes in the hard decisions of yin and yang, what's in, what's out? Or maybe some things will be out before we get that far. But so far, the plans are everything that you heard about, fire, police, highway, EMS, community center hopefully, but we'll see how you guys go with that. And administration would be moved onto the promenade site. And it would be a game changer in that part of town. It would refresh, renew, set an example for other developers, set an example for other businesses. So I think it is a good investment of the township's money. And that's my thoughts.
Clark Schiffer just asked, how about accessibility from our schools? If we want after-school programs, kids will need a safe way to walk or ride a bike to the property and not walk down Precuman Avenue.
Right, and in our initial thoughts, there is a dead-end street, and the hill's steep now, but there is a way to terrace and rebuild it. We think we can come right up near the back of the schools, on the back of the site, I'm sorry, I don't have the road at my convenience, and be able to provide a really nice pathway from all the athletic fields that are behind all the schools up the hill to the promenade site, tie it into a village green. We're working from scratch on that site. So we can sort the cars, the kids, the police vehicles and fire trucks, which are even, you know, you don't want kids messing with that either. So that's our initial thought, that there is an opportunity to come down in that corner, which now, you have to use your little imagination. It doesn't look like it now, you'd have to move some dirt. It's very doable. And that would give a very, that's just the, at the end of a residential street that terminates at the promenade site owned by the school district. So that would be a wonderful opportunity. If we get an after-school center, you probably wouldn't even need vehicles. You could get a few bike racks, and you're on your way, down the back initially.
Robert Hoffman just said, in addition to the food pantry and a larger open floor plan, would allow for a small farmer's market, tabletop yard sale, and similar low-cost, low-impact type events.
I don't see why not. Those are pretty flexible commonplaces. I think it'd be, I'd be delighted to see a farmer's market in there every weekend. That'd be kind of cool. It would be wonderful.
Yeah, that is actually something, I've had many inquiries about that type of thing, and we don't really have a facility right now that's ideal for something like that. But yeah, that's something I've been asked about many times. It's an interesting idea.
All right, well, Laurie, I think you've covered everyone in the chat. We see no more, no more, no more hands raised. We are at an hour, so we want to be respectful of everyone's time. So do want to thank you for coming out tonight virtually on Zoom, and we will take all of your comments back and see how budgets and plans, as Jay spoke about earlier, how those all come together. So we want to thank you for your participation, your great comments, and thank you for taking the time tonight to join us.
Yeah, I'd like to add a post, I also thank you. And I want to say again, I want to counsel, be patient, these things take time. I see some of you have been working for two years and didn't do anything. My attitude is, it's a fifty-year investment, whatever it is, whatever size, whatever goes there, this is probably not the time to rush it. We're not getting paid by the hour, so it doesn't matter, does it? To you guys, if we spend an extra six months to get it right, I am proud of their strong reputation of trying to work with the community and ultimately coming out the other side with something that benefits the community. You won't all be happy, but I think when we get done with it, we will satisfy the basic needs of the majority of the people in the community. But to do that, we need some time and we need some patience. You be aware, I know the pandemic makes everybody crazy. Nothing is happening behind the scenes super secret, other than in our office trying ideas and playing with it, which we haven't shared with a lot of the township yet. So please be patient. Thank you for your time, and please continue to follow the process. It will be totally public, one way or another, either Zoom public or in-person public. It will be a very public process.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for giving us an hour of your night tonight. I'm sure everyone is fatigued with these virtual meetings, but we appreciate the participation.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, and we will obviously be getting this information out to the public. This was recorded, so other folks will be able to see it and give their input. As I said earlier, anytime you are interested in providing input to the township, you can do that through our website to any of the staff members, and we'll try and get answers back to you and pass that information on to the board of supervisors. Have a good night. Thank you.